So the first item is the consideration of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Well moved.
Is your second? It's a discussion, hearing none, all those in favor. All those opposed. Our next item is our public comment period. And if any resident or guest has a comment or question, now is the opportunity. And if so, anybody in the audience here, anybody on my Oh, okay. Mr. Chair. Mr. Rowi Kana.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have the floor.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to bring raise this question that I've had for some time. And the Public Safety Committee has also raised this a few times. And that is the the status of into the intersections at Cumberland and Warwick Lane, and Devon Lane and Dorset, where shrubbery has essentially made those blind intersections. In fact, the towns signs, the stop signs are obstructed. And the Public Safety Committee had, in fact, recommended to
Can you can you restate your last sentence? Because we lost you.
Very good. Yeah, I'm just simply saying that the Public Safety Committee had also written to the town manager expressing our concerns about the safety at those two intersections, which have essentially become blind intersections. And this is particularly hazardous for pedestrians, because you cannot see pedestrians approaching those intersections. So I wanted to sort of get a sense from
So you wanted an update. So you want an update from the town manager on the status of the intersections. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you for your comment. We are currently working with the property owner to get that clear while also maintaining their plantings. We also are going to be putting some new signage there to make it clear as well. So there should actually be hopefully getting care of relatively soon. Thank you.
Did you? Did you have a follow up question?
No, I just the only point I'd like to make is this has been a very, it has been a longstanding issue now for almost a year. So I hope I hope that the town will move expeditiously now to bring this matter to closure. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the hard work of your of your committee. Was there anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll second that.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. All those opposed. Thank you. Thank you. The next item, and we I see we're like one minute ahead. No, no, we're not one minute ahead, because it's 20 minutes. Okay, the next item is entitled Discussion on the Water Aerobics Class Fee. Now, this is on the agenda at the request of the Honorable Lucy Freeman and the members, those that participate in the Water Aerobics class. And so I want to turn the this item over to Councilmember Debbie Heller, who is the liaison to the the pool committee, who has has something that she wants to discuss as the baseline for our for the discussion tonight. So Councilor Heller.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. Thanks for putting up for me, guys. I'm in Los Angeles. Anyway, it's come to our attention that that we that we've collected fees for water aerobics, and that we've collected more than we possibly need. To give you an example of what we need, you know, we have got to get to the right sheet, sorry. We have we have nine more classes of water aerobics, including today. Today's part of the nine. And with that, we've collected, as of today, $780 more than we need for water for water aerobics. Technically, we need $900 to fund the rest of water aerobics. So we've collected an overage of $780. And we also have collected guest fees. And I'm separating the guest fees from the class. And I think that's a discussion we're going to have at a later date in a more robust fashion. But with the guest fees, we've collected, we've collected $441 of guest fees, or we should have, you know, I'm not so sure we've collected every dollar of this. Linda's Linda's busy, you know, collecting people from collecting from people that have not paid. But I'm sure she'll get it all. Anyway, so if we need $900 and we have 780, I am suggesting that we forego water aerobics fees for our residents, but not our guests. I think guests still have to pay to come to water aerobics. As it is, we didn't even charge what we were what we had intended to charge, which was the $9 fee plus a $5 pool guest fee. So they're coming in at $9, and I think that guests still should need to pay. But we need to forgive the the nine, the next, I guess, eight classes or nine classes, depending how Linda does the math, for fees for water aerobics for the rest of the summer. So that's my suggestion.
So you have a specific proposal, right?
Yes, my proposal. Okay, do you want me to make it?
No, go ahead. Why don't you state your proposal? Because what we'll do is this is listed as a discussion, but what we'll do is you'll make a proposal, the council will ask questions about it, and then we will open it up for comments from the citizens. So so why don't you state specifically?
Before I do that, just want to say to some of my fellow council members, I talked to you about numbers earlier in the day, but I was wrong, because I was going off of last year's numbers. So later this afternoon, I got with this year's numbers, which is where this is all coming from. And so my proposal is that for the rest of the summer of the pool, the rest of that the pool is open, that we do not charge our residents for water aerobics. And that, but we do charge our guests for water aerobics. That is my proposal.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let me just add, before I take questions from the council, did the does the town manager want to? Did you want to add anything to that? Is that going to be?
I have no comments.
If that's you're you're cool with that?
Yes.
Yeah, it can work. It can work. Okay, great. Council President, do you have any questions?
Yes, Debbie, is it your belief that if other activities at pools, such as swim team, have also generated more money than covers their expenses, they should go free or generally?
You know, you're Robin, this is a big question, and I really want to have this conversation at a at a later time, when I can really gather all the information as to what all of our other programs cost, and what makes sense then for us to do as a town, and how we want to fund fund things, fund our programs, because we have several. And 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 Swim Team is an excellent example of that as well. And so I have a little laundry list going of things for us to discuss. I just need to do the research and put numbers behind them for us to discuss. But for right now, I really just wish we would just go forward with this proposal. If you want, if anyone wants to
Second question is, have you in your calculations figured in facilities costs and as well as the costs of the teacher?
No. And that is also an excellent question. I don't really know how to do that. But why I feel comfortable in this is that we have collected to date $441 of guest fees towards this program. So I feel comfortable that if there, even though I can't calculate what it costs us to run the program at the pool, besides what it costs to hire this instructor, I feel comfortable that we're covering, you know, excess, you know, wear and tear on our chairs, or more water in the showers, or whatever. But that isn't something that that we really need to discuss at a later date in more depth with better with better information, and try to figure out how we we actually calculate those fees.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Serko, do you have any question?
Just in view of, at least, I was confused by some of the numbers from the area you know what you're saying here. So I just want from the town manager, are you in agreement with what is what's being proposed now in terms of numbers?
Yes, I think
You understand the numbers come from?
Yes, yes.
Not I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kumar.
Just to verify, so we have recovered the cost of provisioning water aerobics to the Yes. And then what's our surplus?
Can I can answer that? Kabir?
Yeah.
Right now, our surplus to date is $780 in residents paying for water aerobics. And it's $441 for guests to cover the guest fees. So that's why I know we're okay. We need $900 to pay to pay for the rest of the classes. And so I think I think we're okay.
So our surplus is $300. Okay. Okay, I think it's cool.
Is that it? Okay, cool. Councilor Roth, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Now it's now we can hear from our citizens, and if you have a comment. The Honorable Lucy Freeman.
I am not sure. Oh, this is Lucy Freeman. I live on Ballstone Avenue, 4719 Ballstone Avenue. And I like the way this discussion is going. It would have been better if at the beginning of the season, the amount could have been what Matt Hollinger and I recommended. And then we would have paid for the whole season, and everyone would have paid a people amount. I have heard two different things when I asked the guards, when I talk about it. I think that tons of people pay the guest fee and the guest fee. I mean, the rent, this water aerobics fee and the $5 guest fee. They used to remove that. How do you handle that, Linda?
I just didn't do nothing. They removed it safe.
Just the ropes. Okay. So I've heard from the guard something different. But anyway, as for, I was wondering, well, Robby had mentioned this to me about the cost of the town. When people pay early mornings swim, they pay for the lifeguard, and what amount do they pay over for the upkeep of the pool?
Do you know where it's?
I can look into it a little bit, actually.
We can get that. We can get back.
And what about the swim fee, when they pay in, what amount are they paying over?
Well, we can get you the information.
Okay, so I'd just like to say, so then we had a camp here just recently. It was sort of late afternoon, and I think some members of the town paid for somebody to come and teach classes. And then what amount was it out and paid for the people of the pool?
That was not related to the town. That was not like a town activity.
And what about
Councilor Seth, will
No, it was that American University
No, no, that was that was that was private. Yeah, that was a private
And what about the master class coming up? What I'm saying is, this has been brought up to me before, this year, last year. And I'm wondering if every, you know, at the beginning of the season, with early mornings swim, we're asked, if they are asked to pay for putting a new deck on the pool, or these different things, or if it's just water aerobics, because, you know, you just want to be treated fairly like the other people. Then what I do want to say is, it's been a very successful season. I think Yeah, I think
It's happened every season.
I think when we get 23 people, I mean, only once did we had 23 people. That's a lot of people, you know, down for it, and there are men and women, women and men, and all ages, and everyone has a very good time. You know, it's really a lot of fun. Everyone that wanted to come down, but I think I said, Jeff, come down and take part.
I I have to do it, in fact.
He said, what asked you?
Can I can I ask?
Water aerobics, you know.
Jeffrey, can I ask something?
Of course, yeah.
Lucy makes the point that, you know, there were there were days when, you know, there were 23 and 24 people. I actually have it broken down. I know exactly how many people were there every day. And if I took an average, and I can't do that in my head, but as I'm sitting here looking at all the numbers, it was probably more an average of 12 or 13 a day. If you if you average it out, but I can do that math, Lucy, I just can't do it now. You know, but
Now, everyone, Debbie, everyone has the list, because I sent them all, how many people attended each time.
Oh, I but you didn't send that to me, Lucy.
No, I sent it to you.
I don't think so.
Anyway, so as Councilor Heller Lucy, as Councilor Heller pointed out, this should be a much broader discussion, and you've raised a lot very good points about all these other activities. I personally feel that, just like at Health Club, that water rubbish should be free, because we should be promoting the good health and physical fitness of our residents. But anyway, for this, you're okay. Are you supporting the proposal?
I support the proposal.
Okay, good.
The still, the town will make a lot of money off this, and we're supposed to be a part of it.
Right, right. So so thank you so much for raising this, and and I know you'll be involved with all these discussions for next year. Thank you so much.
I'll send it to you again.
I have it, Lucy. Lucy, I didn't. You don't need to send it to me again. I've got it. I I worked all that out earlier.
But but also, Lucy, we'll make sure you get this other information that you requested. Thanks. Did anybody else just on Zoom, Ruth Susswing? I hope I pronounced your last name right. Okay. Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi.
I think someone turned my camera off, if that's
Oh, can you? We're gonna, we're gonna
Okay, so but my
Do you want to put your camera on?
Keep trying, and oh, there it is. Okay.
There you go. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So first of all, Debbie, let me thank you for that proposal. I think that that makes a lot of sense, and I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure that other people who take the water aerobics class would really appreciate that. I just want to raise a couple of things. So so I'm glad to hear that you're going to do some, you may do something about this now, and hopefully we'll spend some time looking at the bigger picture for next year. I just want to remind everyone that this year's water aerobics fee went up a small amount, but went up this year without any discussion. We were just told we'll pay more. And I I want to take what I want to add to what Lucy has already said. Because I think it's really, I'm sorry, there's a printer I'm not controlling going on next to me.
We can't hear it anyway.
Oh, okay, good. So in addition to early morning swim and swim team, of course, I I don't know what the charge was for stroke and turn. But that may have been something that was just offered at no charge to people, and yet, you know, those are other folks using the pool and and additionally, there are the tennis courts, right? We just repaved them again, and I know they're very popular and and are well used. But I guess what I'm saying is, I think it's important for the town to look at all of these costs. And as a matter of equity, if there's going to be, whether it's an increase in price, or to each resident, or amount that's charged that's over and above what the costs are, it should be equitable, that that's the case with all activities that people are paying an extra fee for. So I would just ask that when you look at this whole situation more broadly, that you consider the equity.
Thank you so much. And and I'm going to make sure that you're that I will be spoon feeding you lots of information during budget season and all that next year. But thanks for coming tonight, Ruth.
And thanks for the current proposal.
Okay, is there anybody else that wanted to?
Well, there's been several residents that have emailed in comments. The first one was Ann Turner of Surrey Street, who said, hello, I understand there's a credit in the pool account for water aerobics, and I vote to give the participants free interest for the last eight sessions. Then Barbara Condo sent in an email. I believe she'd also on the Zoom if she would like to comment, but she did not raise her hand.
She wanted a comment.
Barbara, would you like to comment, or would you just let me through your email?
Right, well, we have it. It's in the record. Councilor Condos, it's in your email, it's in the record. The public record, anything else?
And then Lucy Freeman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is that all?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to the Council President to leave the discussion and decision.
Okay, so first of all, can we get a motion? Seconded it. Debbie, you've proposed the motion to waive the fee for the remainder of the session. I need to hear a second.
Well, well, but I think you want to have a discussion.
Well, let's get the motion on the table.
Okay, whatever you want to do. Okay, sure.
All right, it's been seconded, so now we can discuss it.
Okay. You so you have you know what the motion is. And I assume it's your town attorney, it's legally and technically.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so I understand there's a strong feeling from the water aerobics community to waive the fee for the remainder of the year, because the sense is that you have actually covered all your costs already. I would put it this way. I'd be happy to see the fee waived, because it's been such a successful program. But I dispute whether in fact you have covered all your costs. I'll leave it at that, and others can comment.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so so is there further discussion?
Yes, well, right, I mean, anybody, so Kabir?
I just, yeah, I'll make a, well, first of all, what we are saying is, we have recovered our direct cost of provisioning water aerobics, not up to this point, but to the rest of the season. Number two, we have surplus. It's not a lot. Comment about how making $300, which we just as a roughie, which is great. Thirdly, in our history, I think it's been hard to predict how many people will attend water aerobic class. So some summers it's a lot, some summers it's less. I think historically, we've not had a surplus, as far as I'm So it'd be good to clarify that. If you've had a surplus, then that would be good to know, then, because that will inform adjustment of fees. That's why I think we struggle to set the fee. Because if you had set it at $8, would we have had a surplus? With that $300? Probably not. So that I think that's partly why we struggle. Just just so you know, it's not that it's been set arbitrarily. And then, you know, I think that to Robin's point, there are, that's a direct cost. And then there are costs of running the pool. I'm fine with this, you know, keeping those separate, just to be clear. Because I think the primary job of our government is to make sure that that pool is open and available and functional. And everything else is added services, as as long as those added services are cost recoverable, I think that's awesome. Right? So we get taxes, we spend on different things, pool is one of the things we spend on, the infrastructure. So I'm comfortable with that being a separate. So all of that to say, I'm in favor of voting.
Yeah, because the the pool's not, I mean, the pool's already open when they're doing it. It's not like we're opening it special for that.
And you paid for that and bought up the services.
Right, and it's already there, or whatever. But I think that, I mean, I totally agree that we should look at everything for next year, because I do think that it's not fair that the stroke and turn is like not a fee for people, but yet water aerobics is. So I mean, but I'm definitely in favor of waiving the rest of the fees for the rest of the year, and then looking at it next year.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say something. I'm here, still here. I wanted to say that the water aerobics fee that for $9 this year was not an arbitrary number. I actually spoke with the water aerobics company, and I asked that, and I queried them, what do what do people charge for this? I wanted to make sure that we would, we could cover our costs, but wouldn't be outrageous. I wanted to make sure it was very affordable for all of our residents. And she helped me come to the the number of $9. She said that that is extremely low compared to any of the other pools where they, you know, that have water aerobics. I was comfortable with nine, because I really didn't think eight was going to cover it. In past years, we've covered it and sometimes not covered it, if we really go back historically. You know, so I just thought this was a good way to go, and I think this is a good compromise right now. So we corrected our course.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. All those opposed. Thank you very much. Excellent legislating. Next item, public hearing on a permit application submitted by David Kelly for a driveway apron and three variances for the property at 4815 Cumberland Avenue. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. This is the property owner at 4815 Cumberland has applied for a driveway permit that also includes three variances. So the first variance is to widen the driveway apron from 20 feet to 25 feet, which exceeds our normal detail. Then the second variance is to make that the common, the variance, sorry. The second variance is to make it a gravel driveway instead of a concrete driveway. Our code requires it to be concrete, but the applicant would like it to be gravel. And finally, the third variance is to widen the apron at a 0.7 feet behind the curb to the front property line. It can be 15 feet. I can let Doug as well comment. Doug? Can you hear us, Doug?
Yeah, you should have a color sketch showing the three variances. And also, you should have a copy of the town's driveway apron detail, which shows a maximum of 20 feet at the curb and 10 feet at the front property line. This is a shared driveway, and I believe Mr. Kelly has been talking to the adjacent neighbor who shares it, who is the party that wants it gravel. So I would recommend that the council approve the variance based on the approved sketch.
Thank you. Does the town attorney wish to?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Kelly. Good evening. If you could come over to the podium, and if you I don't have my script tonight, by the way. So if you want to comment on the report or add anything, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And good evening. The only thing I might add is that the town allows for a 10-foot apron for each property in the town. And ours currently, a 10-foot apron, a 10-foot apron currently serves 4815 and 4813 Cumberland. And I thought we would be allowed to put a 10-foot apron, add that to the to the page five foot. So that's all I can add.
Okay.
I hope I have the support of the neighbors on this. We changed the pavement for the whole driveway, or three quarters of it to gravel instead of concrete. That actually looks pretty nice.
Okay, thank you. If you can just stay there, why don't you take Council President, or any other questions?
Yep. What is the slope on the driveway at the moment?
That figure, we didn't change the slope. It was like 5%.
Okay, maybe, maybe.
The existing driveway would have remained throughout the whole project. We moved this set of the control fence out of out of the easement, so that the neighbor continued to have use to their the back of their turnaround with their parking pad in the back. We had to modify that, just the driveway.
Yeah, I mean Right, that you just cited a critical number, though, the 5% rule, which which is that if it slope is greater than 5%, then you do not have to have a permeable driveway according to our code. But if it is less than 5%, we expect a permeable driveway. A gravel driveway is not a permeable driveway. So that's why it's relevant to to the issue.
What did you want to ask the
Maybe do the neighbors know, or does Doug know whether it's 5% or not? Doug, do you know the slope of driveway? Doug, do you know the slope of driveway?
Did you hear the question?
Doug, did you hear the question? Doug?
We can go on to the other questions.
And council member Barr, one issue is that our code requirement for permeable driveways applies to new or replacement driveways. This may be an expansion of an existing driveway rather than a replacement, but
hard to call that one.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so is Doug? Is he, is he here now? Okay, well, that's, maybe you can text him, say, council member Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Haller, do you have any questions?
You're muted.
Councilor Haller, you're muted.
Okay, the way my husband likes me. I, that was funny, guys, anyway. I, I missed some, some of the, some of the, some of the explanations because it was hard for me to hear for whatever reason. Are we having this discussion to have a gravel driveway because it, it shares with the other neighbors? Would this be a discussion if they didn't, if it was just a single driveway? You know what I mean?
I think there are questions to the town attorney.
So, yes. Currently, the code provides that the curb cut or the curb entrance at the street can be twenty feet wide, this is going to be twenty five feet wide. So there's an extra five feet proposed, but as the applicant noted, it's a shared driveway. So the code on its face doesn't expressly distinguish between single driveways and shared driveways. Secondly, the width of the apron behind the curb cut, so from the front property line to the street is allowed to be ten feet, and this is proposed to be fifteen feet, so another five foot variance is sought there, and then the standards for driveway apron construction in a right of way, not in the front yard, but in a right of way, require the aprons to be concrete. And gravel's proposed for a certain section of that, that apron. Now, there, you know, it might be worth noting that the town's borrowed the county construction standards. Other towns do the same. One difference between the town of Somerset and other towns is in other towns, towns maintain the aprons. And so there is a strong desire by those governments to have aprons constructed to withstand use over many years because the town's responsible for replacing them. In Somerset, the homeowners replace the aprons, so that may be a factor to consider for you. Also, the width regulations are generally to preserve the character of the community, but perhaps more importantly, to preserve street parking. And as this is a shared driveway, that might be an issue for you to consider. And the also having concrete versus gravel in the right of way is important for ADA compliance if there were to be a sidewalk there. There's currently no sidewalk there.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question, council member Haller?
Yes, it, it did, thank you.
Do, do you have any further questions?
Me?
Yeah.
Not right now, thank you.
Okay, councilor Kumar.
This is Doug, I did check the slope on the driveway, and it is deeper than five percent.
Okay.
Just on the third variant. Why are you proposing gravel, so concrete for that section?
Well, that's what the neighbors had requested.
Yeah, so this is a combination you're making for the neighbors.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it, councilor Rubik, do you have any questions?
So, so then I guess, like, how does this then work with their, the, the shared driveway, like, do you like, i- is the driveway that you guys are requesting basically just like a nor, like a one car driveway in that like any house would get?
What we have is an established ingress, egress, egress easement, which is recorded in land records and ten feet wide and run back to the existing turnaround. And that goes through the property line. With these variants of, of, or that is from the property line to the street, that's the, the town's right of way.
Oh, right.
So for the driveway, we've been in discussion with the neighbors about the surface, and we've come to terms that what we're going to do there is acceptable to them, and I was just considering a section between the property line and the apron.
Okay, so it's not the wi, isn't the width too, of like the cuts?
It's just the, yeah, the E J kernel cut or the driveway from where it meets the street.
So will that then look like a super wide driveway apron, because you've got five feet wider than it is right now, or than normal?
But, but, you can discuss something, but
Because they have the shared easement driveway that's got its own little part. Is that like on there, is that shared easement the full driveway, or is that just your portion of the half of it?
The dark line is the property line. The easement is five feet onto forty eight thirteen property, five feet onto our property.
Okay.
That cannot be blocked by either property, that's a recorded in the calendar. This five feet that I'm asking for is actually just from the property line to the end of the apron, and the existing apron comes to around about the, about there. So, just adding five feet at the, at the property line, or eight, seven feet off the apron, seven feet.
Okay, and so that would then put it, I guess this is a question for Ron, like that puts it then over the amount of, of what's allotted for a single family home.
So it would be twenty feet at the curb entrance and where the curb is cut. And fifth and ten feet behind that from where the turning radius start to the front property line. So there's extra five feet foot there and an extra five feet at the curb cut.
And then do we, I don't know, see, I don't know whose questions these are for. But was that, was that factored in as part of like the impervious surfaces that we would account for runoff?
No, that's, that's the right of way for the town, that doesn't back into the impervious surface on the lot, our lot starts at the apron.
Okay. Okay.
But for those calculations, sort of.
Okay, and then, and then is, is there anything like, I mean, so I guess why, why, why is this coming up now? Did we, was this like not part of the original plan?
Well, I sort of assumed that it was, but I talked to the engineers and they said no, so you know, it's all along, I really wasn't sure how the driveway was going to be built because the neighbors expressed interest in a certain surface, I couldn't, you know, I hadn't decided what that would be. The original plan showed the dis concrete and just trying to eat these in the neighborhood, I decided to change that surface, so.
And so then this doesn't have to go back through Montgomery County permitting?
No.
And
I'm just changing the material, not the, the, the size.
So the original plans accounted for the size of the extra five feet?
This looks like a WeWorks.
Well, it, it, it accounted for this section on our property, not the apron, that's what we're asking for.
The apron, okay, and then, so obviously that does, I mean, it is a really unique spot of Cumberland with this easement of the driveway and no sidewalk. And then parking, because you know, parking is very challenging on that part of Cumberland, so that would then take more fit spot, because it's yeah, okay.
Well, with the driveway and the garage, I'm adding at least five cars to all street parking.
But I mean, that would just be for your house.
Yeah. I might also add that there's at least three other houses on that block that have shared driveways and they're, they're closer to fifteen feet.
Okay, and then was this so were the neigh, maybe this is for E J, were the neighbors notified of
Yes.
this, like, when, is there a variant, like an application for the variance?
Yeah, the neighbors were notified ten days in advance and both, Mr. Kelly, the owners of forty eight thirteen and I have been in communication about it.
Okay, is there?
They have, they have not submitted formal comments about the
In our okay, okay, I don't have any other questions right now.
Okay, since our building engineer is now back, right? I'm going to run through, see if anyone has questions, do you have any?
Well, I had one additional question, yeah, it's come up in the discussion. What does the extra five feet give you going from ten to fifteen feet?
Well, just ease of access into the property, and right now that the apron is a mix of concrete and asphalt, which has been overlaid to the curb and the gutter and the down on that section of the street. And it's just, it's very narrow for two lots to share that ten foot.
So you, you're not envisioning two cars being able to pass on the driveway at fifteen feet, no? Okay. I'm keep thinking. Yeah, well, I'm not really seeing the advantages, my problem. I mean, in other words, that previously the cars have been able to get out with a ten foot driveway and back in with a ten foot driveway. And I'm not sure that a fifteen foot driveway gives any advantage over that, given it's been clearly demonstrated that they can do that at ten feet. It's
Oh, it's, I, I don't have an answer to that, I just it's so small and it's tight and would like to have it
Yeah, okay.
not, not twenty feet, but fifteen feet, and I, I was thinking that within the town that we could have that forty eight thirteen could have a ten foot apron and the forty eight fifteen could have a ten foot apron. Originally, the driveway was to be a bit wider, but we went through the exercise of preferring a cherry tree in the front. Issues there, it was, it is doing okay. And that's reduced the size of the, of the driveway. I'd just like to have it I'd like to be done with the project, I don't, I'd like to get the apron redone and
Right.
Would make for a nicer egress and do both, both lots.
Okay, thank you.
That, council member Circa, do you have any further questions?
Just confirmation that the neighbors have.
Well, there's a, there's a hearing, there's a
I'd say I'd like to hear from the neighbors, I guess if that
Yeah, because, yeah, but did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, councilor Haller, do you have any further questions? You're muted.
No, I just have comments, so this is just questions, right?
Yeah, this is questions of the
Okay.
town, of the staff and the applicant.
Okay, thank you, I can wait.
Okay, councilor Kumar.
I have a question for Ron, in a scenario in which forty eight thirteen is, you know, changed, but they have a new driveway on the other side of the house. That's it. What happens to this driveway, does this driveway, like legally, how does that evolve? Does it become forty eight fifteen driveway?
It would continue to be
Forty eight fifteen, because it's easement?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
The, the, the easement would have to be abandoned or modified legally with revocation in land records before forty eight fifteen would not be allowed to use it.
So down the road, effectively, this would be forty eight fifteen driveway? If forty eight thirteen had a new driveway?
Yes.
In a new house construction?
Yes. That whatever portion is within the scope of the common driveway easement.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilor Rubik, do you have any further?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, and now, thank you, sir, so now any citizen that wishes to testify, please come to our beautiful podium. Tell us your name and your, thank you, thank you for joining.
Hi, I'm Jamie Kaplan, it's from forty eight thirteen Cumberland Avenue, the neighbor. And we support the easement, I think it makes for both driveways, it's much easier to use, it widens it, but it doesn't give each house their own driveway. I do think it gives that additional five feet, I don't think by having five feet, you're really taking away people parking, but what you are allowing is that it's easier for the owners of forty eight fifteen to use the driveway and to go in and out. And I think just, the other thing is just with the variance of keeping part of that using, keeping it gravel, I think we're just looking to keep as much of the driveway gravel as possible. So we support all three differences.
Anybody else?
Did today one? We have Rafi Khan, that's right, it's the same one, soon. Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair. Mr. Khan? Mr. Chair Khan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I have a question that was triggered by the town attorney's comment that there is currently no sidewalk there. As, as you're aware, the town will be assessing the possibility of extending the sidewalk down Essex. And that assessment will take place hopefully during the course of this year. What I wanted to just ensure is that we are not creating a situation on the ground that precludes adding the, adding a sidewalk there. It's already challenging enough to think about how we're going to extend the sidewalk. Are we going to create a situation over there that makes it even more difficult by having gravel or any other variance requests in this application, thank you.
Okay, well, that's a question for the town attorney or the town engineer.
Sure, I can provide the legal aspect of that response, Mr. Mayor. No, I cannot. Because it's within the town right of way, the town would have the ability in the future to require its removal or replacement if a sidewalk were to be installed. A sidewalk would have to be ADA compliant. And the, the town would have to take what steps are necessary to accomplish that. Now in the towns where the towns maintain the apron, some towns will require a public right of way agreement to reflect that, that if the town ever requires to reclaim any part of that right of way, then the owner understands that that private improvement must be removed at the private owner's um, cost. I don't think that's necessary here, I mean, it would be a belt and suspenders approach, it would be nice to have, but it'd be because the, the town does allow private owners to maintain aprons. And there's no sidewalk now, I, I do think under future circumstances where a sidewalk would be installed, the town would be able to compel its removal and replacement without a specific agreement in, in the land records. But if you wanted the belt and suspenders approach, we could do that. In other words, this approval could be conditioned on the owners of both properties executing a right of way agreement which reflects that gravel is allowed subject to the condition that it be removed if the town ever needs to reclaim that portion of the right of way for sidewalk that is ADA compliant.
Okay, thank you, so I think that answers his question, is it, was there anything else? Okay, thank you. So I think that answers his question. Is it, was there anything else?
Uh, Kumar Vaswani.
Mr. Chair, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I don't have my camera on. I'm just gonna go with a microphone today. Uh, I have a few comments about this and I'm speaking as a private resident. Uh, for starters, there was no application in the council packet. So residents were in the dark as to the reasons for the application. So I'm just asking that in the future, the application be included in the council packet that's available to the public so residents can see all the information. Second, I haven't seen an analysis of the factors that are in the code that would allow a variance. And it seems there's a whole series of factors like the, you know, peculiar difficulties with the lot or unusual hardship. I haven't seen that analysis. Third.
Well, hold on a second. Let's have the town attorney address that.
Yeah, those factors in section one twelve dash fourteen with respect to a variance are what the council will consider in its deliberations in this hearing.
Okay, thank you. But Mr. Kelly hasn't propounded any particular hardship. I mean, everybody else has a ten foot wide driveway. Now, you can also make the argument it's a shared driveway. It's, you know, less of an inconvenience for the public. So I hope that all comes out in the discussion. Uh, third, when I drove by that property on Saturday night, there was no house number displayed on it. And this has come up with other permit applications and other modifications of permits. Our town code requires a house number on any, every house. It also requires a house number to be displayed on a post during construction of a house. So I hope that that defect can be.
Thanks for bringing that up. Well, the staff will make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you. And then my final comment is that residents at large only had three days notice of this variance application. It was dropped on us Friday night at the time that the agenda and packet were released. And I know that the adjoining and confronting residents get actual ten days notice or something, but these variances affect the entire town and frankly, three days is not enough time, particularly if somebody's out of town and it's on a weekend. So it's really not enough time for residents to provide any meaningful input on this. So I'd appreciate it in the future if residents could get this in the town announcements as soon as the permit application is uh received by the town.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that idea up, which can be considered. See if the code needs to be updated, but thank you. Okay, so I think because of those comments, uh, I need to give Mr. Kelly some rebuttal. The two, the two um the two citizens that testified, you might want to give your rebuttal if you have any before the council.
Just about the driveway, the I'll say it again, that there are other driveways along Cumberland. I know at least three that are shared driveways and they are fifteen feet or fourteen foot nine. Uh, I've got the measurement on pad of paper, but they're close to fifteen feet. So it's not uh something that um setting a precedent for. It's um, it's been done. And if you go and look at the addresses, you know, when you've done that work, it is just a much easier. It's a it's a purrier entrance into the, to the uh into the homes and it's just yeah, just it like it's warranted and which has to grant the variance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, should I give the council the right to, for rebuttal, if they can ask questions?
Sure, beforehand, yeah, if the council.
But they but they can, so when there's rebuttal, then the council can ask questions of the rebuttal.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, council, so you're gonna get, we're gonna, Council President Barr, do you have any further questions? Of Mr. Kelly's rebuttal?
Not on the rebuttal, no.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Serko.
Third question.
Councilor Haller.
No questions.
Councilor Kumar. And now, Councilor Robert.
So you were saying that the um that the, there are several other houses on Cumberland with shared driveways that have fifteen feet. Um, so that's like not you would be establishing like a precedent, like that's already there. But what about um? Are there other houses that have a twenty five feet wide apron?
Well, the the fifteen foot driveway is at the uh at the property line. And all the driveways in the county and the town, which has adopted the standard on building the apron at what's called a five foot wing.
On both sides?
Both sides.
So there, so there are other driveways on Cumberland that would be twenty feet, feet wide? Or?
Yes.
Twenty five feet wide. Okay.
I have a photograph of two of you. If you'd like to sit down, I can.
Um, that's okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So now the public comment period of the hearing is closed and I will turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion and decision.
All right, so I'm just gonna read from the code here, just so we can focus our discussion. With respect to any variance, uh, the straight little application would result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties to the owners on which is proposed, uh, and which is construction is proposed due to exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, topographic conditions, or other extraordinary situations or conditions peculiar to a specific parcel of property. So that's what we've got to go on. That's it. That's how we assume.
Yeah, that you can also use the alternative findings under subparagraph B. So subparagraph A is, let's say, the hardship paragraph.
Okay.
And subparagraph B is the absence of significant interference with compatibility.
Yeah, so we're not incompatible with the scale masking character to the town or of nearby residences. So that's it. So where are you?
Well, good, so one of the things that, I mean, that the Public Safety Committee has put into the budget for this year is a potential revamp of sidewalks and adding sidewalks to Cumberland. So that's why um Mr. Vaswani and Mr. Khan have both mentioned that. And, you know, right where that house is, is kind of like the start of I I don't even know if your house has a little bit of a sidewalk or not, really. Oh, sorry. Um. Anyway, but i- it's got like a little, but I mean, that's definitely a part of Cumberland that is being talked about and budgeted for for a side, potential sidewalk. So I, I mean, it it's not like this was a, this is in the plan for next year or five years. I mean, this is in the budget for making these sidewalks potentially come to fruition this year. So I just, you know, wanna think about that as we're talking about this because there's obviously a lot of implications on this wider driveway. And it having to take up the town right away.
Well, I think that that's a great point about the sidewalks. And I guess I would recommend that we consider what our town council has proposed, that we put a condition on the approval.
Right, because like then also, like if if you approve it, like then who's pays for to take it out and, you know, all of the stuff? I mean, I think it's definitely.
We just make it very clear in our I I would put it into our proposal, what we adopt would be like condition that if we put a sidewalk, then then we'll then they'll take care of it.
Yeah, my other thing that concerns me, well, is that, you know, with I mean, the street is definitely a unique street with, you know, these shared driveways and no garages and, you know, parking situations as such. I mean, it is it it is a challenging street to drive down in morning and pick up people for school. Um, and uh, you know, I mean, with, there's cars everywhere, uh, you know, where wherever they can be. So my other concern is, I mean, even with this, like, taking this extra feet, I mean, it is still you know, gonna take away street parking, you know, across the street from them, are houses that don't have garages or driveways that park right there. Um, so that would be another concern. And then my, my third concern that I have is the water. I mean, I think that it's a wider van thing, but I mean, I think the water is gonna rush towards that backyard. I'm sure that the um developer like has a plan for that, but um, and then finally, it's, it leaves a very wide open area between these two houses that is not green space at all. And it does change the character and the look, I think, of that street to not have any green separating, you know, I don't know if there's a possibility to make part of it permeable so that you do have like some of this green space that's like in there, but um, those are just my thoughts.
Right, thank you. Debbie?
Thank you. Uh, here's my concern. And Shannon just brought up, what about the parking? And we need to begin to take into consideration and think about every inch of space we have for parking. Because with the new ZTA's coming our way, and I know it's not tomorrow, but they're going to let, let there be, you know, quadplexes, triplexes, duplexes. And there's not going to be enough parking built in for those, those new homes or new styles of homes. And I think we need to protect every inch of of um of parking that we can. So I am really not in favor of this variance. So just wanna raise the antenna on that one. I know it's.
That's particular to the one that extends the driveway. Apron flares, I'll call them, to twenty five feet.
Right. Okay, am I talking about the wrong one? Okay.
No, that's, no, that is one of the three. It's just
Yes.
one that you're reacting to. Okay.
Yes.
All right, um, Kabir?
I'm comfortable with the proposal, frankly. Um, I think it will improve the quality of life for our sets of homeowners. After when you were in a shared driveway situation, you know, we are talking about feet, but you're talking about a shared driveway, the car moving in those type shit. I think it'll just make life easier for them. I don't think giving up five feet will radically impact parking in that street. Um, and it turns out that the gravel is an accommodation that they're making to the neighbors. So that is a plus in my mind, frankly. Uh, and it turns out if we do a right of way agreement, we'll have to re, we'll have to, if we do first of all, that's gonna be a very uphill battle to put sidewalks there. If we get there, we will have to con- construct the sidewalks, assuming it's on that side. And we will have to just rebuild on that. So, you know, to the extent that we can have added legal protection, although I believe we already, it's our right of way, so we have already, but we can create a right of way agreement just to make sure, to Shannon's point, since we know this is on the horizon, it's not like two years from now.
And to confirm who's responsible for the cost of the.
To establish who's responsible. But after that, we will have to run a construction project, get the traffic built anyway. So that's where I'm at.
All right, Steve?
I'm just sure, I'm, so how would we I guess phrase that or spell out the conditions that were the owners responsible for removing the driveway near room one for the sidewalk, because the town would then put in the sidewalk?
That's right. Yeah, and that's how it's been worded in other jurisdictions that I represent. And so I have a template that I can put together without much fanfare. Of course, it does have to be signed by the owners of both properties, as I mentioned, because it is a shared apron. So the variance would be contingent on that agreement being negotiated and executed.
I have no other questions.
All right, I mean, my my own sense is that, you know, hewing particularly to the language that we've got in our code, uh, I'm I'm asking. I don't think it's going to be incompatible with the scale masking character of the town or nearby residences, especially when a number of the residences have shared driveways of similar size. I don't think it's going to adversely affect the use enjoyment or value of nearby properties. I don't define cars as nearby properties in this, in that context. Um, so I'm inclined to support the three variances for those reasons. I think the sidewalk. Well, I, well, yeah, I mean, I was gonna say with the under, I think we can build in a right of way condition and should build in a right of way condition that is if anything in any of variances adds expense to the town in constructing a sidewalk, that expense instead should be paid by the owner. Basically, that's, you know.
And if the town needs the private improvements, which have been approved by variance, alter them, remove to accommodate a public sidewalk, then that would be performed by
The owner.
The owners upon thirty days' notice of the town.
Especially since Shannon's observation that we've already divided for this. It's not like it's gonna come years from now, so.
So is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Um, wait. And then, but like, I'm, like, if with the right of way, if you add it into the motion, then, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the plans are for this house. I think that they're gonna try to sell it. Like, would that then stay on the record?
Yes, it's recorded in land records, so it is binding on subsequent owners.
Okay.
All right. Did you wanna make a motion or?
I'll try a motion. Um, so the move that we approved, these three variances requested by David Kelly for the property at forty eight fifteen Cumberland Avenue, um, they include the gravel driveway, the um increase to fifteen feet from ten feet, and also the increase from twenty feet to twenty five feet um at the roadway. Is there a second? Well, and with the condition, sorry, with the condition as expressed by our attorney. Uh, could you say it again?
On the condition that there's a right of way agreement.
Why, why don't you?
Go ahead.
Yes, yeah. With the condition that a right of way use agreement be executed by the owners of forty thirteen, forty fifteen Cumberland, reflecting that should the town need to reclaim that portion of the right of way for a public improvement in the future, that the apron approved by this variance would be vacated and the improvement must be removed by the owners within thirty days and ever since the town.
Okay, so, so did.
Yeah, no wonder I didn't remember it, okay.
So do you have all this? Is that legally, is the whole thing legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You know, you, between the two, you know what it is, right?
Yes.
Can the count? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Well, can I ask?
Now discussion, yeah, now you guys.
Um, so how part of this variance is coming in the form of the shared easement, right? So like, would the green or the next door neighbors have any also fees that, you know, because it's a shared driveway, whereas like if, if they take this variance on their side, you know, but it's still a shared driveway. So how would that work?
That's a question for. So i- is the question how would the responsibility for removal of the apron be broken down in the future?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be fifty fifty under this agreement.
Yeah, under that agreement. So they they would be, so both households would be responsible.
Yes.
For.
But this is only the portion in the right of way. The town does not enforce the common driveway easement that governs what can happen on the two private lots. If that makes sense.
Right.
The, whatever maintenance provision is in that agreement would apply to the portion of the shared driveway between the lots.
Right, okay. Okay.
Yeah, a quick question. Isn't the apron bigger on the new property, on Mr. Kelly's property, than the, the Greens property? And if so, why is it fifty fifty? And maybe it's, you know, fifty fifty, there's a cost once they have to, if we have, if they have to redo it. And if so, why is it fifty-fifty? And maybe it's, you know, fifty-fifty gives a cost once they have to, if we have, if they have to redo it.
Well, certainly the, the town could specify a different percentage, but generally speaking, in my experience, a shared driveway apron is used at fifty-fifty without regard to where it's located.
Okay.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So we pass three to two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, and um.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, who was opposed? And so we, we have to write a decision if there was an opposition. And can I ask Mr. Connor to confirm whether he was just raising concerns or whether he opposed the request?
Uh, Mr. Connet, uh, I don't know if you heard that, um.
Yes, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Under, under our code now, with respective variance requests, we have to write a written decision if there's any opposition to the request. Because someone who's opposing the request has the right of appeal, and that appeal starts to run, that right of appeal, which is thirty days, starts to run from the time a written decision is issued. So I was wondering if you could please clarify whether you were opposing the request or just raising concerns?
Um, well, my initial question was raising concerns, but having heard the discussion, I'm definitely expressing opposition.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Yes, and we will prepare a written decision. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is public hearing on a permit application submitted by Deborah Scholman and Harry Holzer for an enclosed screen porch for the property located at forty-nine oh six Fallstone Avenue. And I, I do wanna note that Councilmember Heller has had to, um, is now absent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so, uh, the property has, uh, prior to submitting an application, converted the deck at the left rear of the existing house to a new enclosed screen porch. This proposed enclosed porch will be two hundred square feet, which takes in our stormwater drainage requirements. Uh, the applicants have elected to use a drywall system as their preferred practice that has gotten pretty good approval from our stormwater engineer, Bayland. Uh, the town staff received his approval of the permits for this project. Uh, Doug, if you would like to comment further?
Uh, just that the, uh, proposed screen porch meets the, uh, town's uh, side yard and rear yard setback and also conforms with the building height setback. Uh, and if, uh, the total impervious area would be twenty-two percent of the lot, which is also, uh, acceptable. And I recommend approval.
Exactly. There was two people. Did, did the town attorney wish to, um, uh, it's, uh, did you want to say anything about this application?
No, it's too many.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Scholman and Mr. Holzer, thank you. If you could, if you would like to come forward. Oh, thank you. If you can come forward and, and, um, you can present the application or comment on the staff report, whatever you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Your. Tell us your name, please, for the record.
I am Scott Willetts.
Thank you.
I'm the architect of this project.
Thank you.
I worked closely with, um, the engineer and landscape sonar back area guarantee, the stormwater shop, worked with us, uh, engineered by Pierce Rowe. And, uh, little backgrounds, we designed this, um, covered porch, uh, that tripped the stormwater management requirements. Um, the project has been approved by the county EPS. And originally we did plans to do a, uh, a rain garden, uh, to manage the water that was coming off the new roof. Uh, upon, uh, the town's request for more information and our own engineering studies, we found first of all that the location of a rain garden in the backyard where we pick up the roof runoff was not a good one for various reasons. Uh, first of all, there are multiple trees there. We wouldn't want to disturb, to put in another storm management system. Uh, also, uh, a- along that part of Fallstone, there are uh, many other shards that slipped into that area. There would be so much runoff that it would really get overrun and the, the system wouldn't work effectively. Uh, so plan B was, we found another place for the rain garden. Uh, and we looked at the front yard, uh, but the topography, the location of a nearby cherry tree uh, pretty much concluded that. Um, this is a part of property, by the way, for those not open to the cycling. Uh, then on the, uh, gray stone side, there's a little more space. Uh, it's flat-ish, though the slope goes from it, it's walkout basement, upper floor entry. Uh, there's always stuff that comes down the side and then off to the gray stone uh, site. But this really means that any stormwater management device, whether it's a environmental uh, rain garden or drywall, still needs to be twenty feet from the house, it has to be inside of the property line. And, uh, uh, any way of catching stormwater, in this case, wouldn't be from the new roof, would be from the existing uh, which we can effectively do, catch half the existing front roof runoff, put around water to manage on the side. Uh, but a rain garden requires that the, uh, pipe, um, that you have natural flow in the rain garden itself, which would have to be troughed into this hillside. So multiple complications. In short, we have to build a retaining wall, uh, the, um, rainwater scuppering from the roof couldn't dunk into the, uh, rain garden itself. Uh, so really that that system would be a drywall, which is more compact with the rain digger there, you can put it underground and then into the drywall itself. Uh, there was plenty of space to manage water within this drywall. Uh, in the opinion of the engineer, this would work as well or have even greater capacity than a rain garden and, uh, when all those factors, um, and, and I was unbelievably impressed with the rain garden, but, uh, I see now what in strange we're working with and feel that this is indeed a more effective system and and of course I recommend this.
Thank you so much. Council President Bard, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I'm, I'm glad you found a solution. It is a difficult task to work with in terms of stormwater runoff, there's no doubt about it. And so if the drywall does work here and it does, uh, it does sound like it does, then I have no questions.
Councilmember Circa?
Um, no questions.
Councilman Kuma?
I, I wanted to talk about the screen porch portion. I wanted to talk about the screen porch area because that's located in South, I think, in the South East Quarter.
It is part of the application because we talked about the, the drive.
Yeah, and, and, but I'm, I, I believe that the porch itself is exceeding, uh, our setback requirements.
It is not.
It's not.
It's not.
It is not, it is within our setback.
Yes.
Okay, never mind.
Uh, there's a rear yard setback thirty feet?
I, I wrote it out there, so everyone can see it, yeah.
Our side yard setback is, um, it's eight feet, we're gonna be smaller inside of that, or I'm sorry, outside of that. Uh, the proposed setback is eight foot, eight inches.
Yeah.
And then off the corner, um, here, or at least, that's not fair. Anyway, it's, um, I think we're at twenty, about two that's ten inches.
Yes.
The rear setback is twenty-three four, or sixty, seventy. So it will offer several inches to make sure that.
Well.
There was some language in our package, then otherwise we'll be all good. Thank you so much.
Is it?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'll run back. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there any suggestions? Okay, thank you very much. I will now turn it over to the Council President to lead the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Did Debbie have any questions?
Um, are we ready for a motion or? Okay, all right, so I move that we approve the permit application submitted by Deborah Scholman and Harry Holzer for their enclosed screen porch for the property located at five forty-nine oh six Fallstone Avenue. Um, stormwater management plan now is included a drywall to handle the runoff.
Second.
Okay, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in paper? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is the building administrator's report. Mr. Lohmeyer?
Yeah. Hey, that's not funny.
Go ahead, Doug. Go, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, at forty-nine oh one Cumberland Avenue, uh, the existing house has been removed and construction has begun on the new house. At forty-eight fifteen Essex, uh, the work has been completed. Uh, Montgomery County released their building permit on August eighth. The applicant has submitted a wall check, uh, certifying that the additions at the front of the house, the portion of steps complied with the variance that the council, uh, approved. So, uh, the town is in the process of closing that building permit. And at fifty-five twenty-two Graystone, uh, the property owner has submitted an application to install several hardscape features in the front yard and backyards and to build a deck around a new pool in the backyard. Uh, these improvements have triggered a, uh, drainage plan and that will require a, a deck permit. And the staff is reviewing those plans now and should come to the council in October. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Council President Bard, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions on the report, no.
Councilmember Circa?
I, I have one question. I've noticed while walking around the town that between the house at forty-seven twelve Fallstone Ave. Um, and the house on the corner of Trenton and Fallstone, a new fence has gone up. So I want this for you, or for the town manager, but has there been any, I don't remember an application for a fence?
Uh, yes.
Is that forty-seven ten? Is that forty-seven ten Fallstone?
Possibly.
The manager's looking it up.
Cause they like.
Yes.
The house faces Fallstone, but the driveway is on.
It is forty-seven ten, yes.
Yes, that was the one where forty-seven twelve, uh, removed the fence that was on their property. But because forty-seven ten had a pool, they were required to come back in and, and construct a fence on the forty-seven ten lot, which they have done, and I believe that work is completed. Cause the pool is now enclosed.
Uh, there's. And the permit wasn't issued for the work. But I think the, the house with the pool is the more modern house at the intersection of Fallstone and Surrey. I'm talking about the, the house that's gonna be torn down, was forty-seven twelve. In between it and the house at the corner of Fallstone and Trent.
On the other direction.
Yeah, the, the modern house is on the other side. Oh, that's Surrey and Fallstone.
Doug, he's on the, uh, forty-seven sixteen, I believe. He's going the other direction. I'm coming down.
Did you get that, Doug?
No, I didn't.
Forty-seven sixteen Fallstone.
Yes, they also, uh, have a fence permit. They installed a fence uh, that did not comply with the town code. We sent them a notice. They are going to be revising the fence to lower it and to move it back from uh, Surrey Street, uh, but that work has not been done yet. So they have a permit to make those changes. It should be coming up soon.
Okay, I, I heard you say Surrey Street again, which confused me, cause the fence I'm talking about is two hundred yards away from.
Oh, I meant, I meant Fallstone.
Okay. So we are talking about. I'm just not sure that, I mean, wish we had a, a map we could all.
Pull it up on Google Maps.
Well, we'll, 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 we'll get the answer. We'll get, we'll get. Okay, we'll get the. Okay, thank you. Councilman Kuma, do you have any questions?
I have the same question. So let's, let's get to the bottom of that. Okay.
Okay, well, well.
We're, we're pulling the map. Is this the house you're referring to? No, no, that's at the corner of Surrey and Fallstone. Now go towards Trent. We're talking about the house that forty-seven twelve. Has the big sign in front of it says you can build a house to your dreams here.
That's gone now.
But, but that house, that's forty-seven twelve, in between that house and the house on the corner of Trent, not Surrey, the corner of Trent, a large fence was put up. And I don't recall ever seeing an application. I don't know if the fence is too tall. I just, I'm just curious. You want me to give you the street address?
Yeah, what's the address?
I'll tell you.
I'm, I'm confused about where y'all talking about. Forty-seven sixteen is at the corner of Fallstone and Surrey.
I think Councilman Kuma has the address.
It's forty-seven ten, the corner of Trent.
Yeah, that, that's on Trent.
He's talking about, that's on Trent, yes. He's talking about between that and forty-seven twelve Fallstone.
Yes.
He's talking about between those.
Forty. Forty-seven twelve will be coming in for a permit probably in the next month or so, but they did take down the fence that was on their property. And forty-seven ten has installed a fence on their property, just around the pool. No other improvements have been, uh, proposed or completed.
Okay. Because what you showed was forty-seven sixteen.
A forty-seven ten fence permit. Well, as long as the, the town was aware of what was happening, that's good. I just. Did you have any questions?
Okay, Councilman.
Um, yes, so. So I, I believe it's fifty-five twenty-two Graystone. That, is that, that's the house that's, that's tall?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a resident come in and make a comment about them and their landscaping and the grass and all the stuff in the front yard, cause they haven't done anything with that yet. Um, is that something that we are? Have we talked to the owners of fifty-five twenty-two?
They have submitted a landscaping plan, but it requires a fence permit, so we're waiting on the fence plan before, uh, they can move forward with their landscaping.
And that includes like grass and everything in the front yard? And then, do they already have a pool?
No, they're adding a pool.
It says that they're adding a pool. Or they're gonna add it?
Oh, in trouble, man.
Well, that, in Doug's report, it says something about a pool.
They're, they're adding a, they're adding a lap pool and a sauna in the backyard. The town does not regulate pools, but we regulate the fence that goes around it and the deck that goes around it.
But.
But I'm sorry, as far as, as far as setbacks goes, it does impact the drainage plan that they're proposing for runoff. Cause the pool is, is, does trigger a drainage plan because of their extir- uh, disturbing more than a hundred and fifty square feet of impervious ground. But as far as a pool permit, we don't issue a pool permit, just a fence.
Oh, okay, so we, so, okay, so this is gonna trigger the drainage plan because of the pool that they're now gonna be building. Okay.
Yes.
So we're gonna see.
Drainage plan will pick that up.
Okay, so we'll, are, are we gonna see that, um, are, are we gonna see that, um, there in October, do you think?
If they get us the information we need, yes.
Yeah, we're still waiting on the, on information from them.
Okay.
It will become, it will go before the council, so, uh, we're waiting on them to give us all the information.
Okay, and there's no way we can, like, in the short term, to try to, like, help the neighbors, like, say that, you know, put some grass in your front yard?
I think the, I think the, um, the Nancy Sussman is, is okay right now. I think the, I think the, um, the Nancy Sussman is, is okay right now.
Okay.
Is that right? I think she's okay right now, cause we're, we're communicating with her.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I just wanna make sure that, you know.
Yeah.
That. Cause it's been going on for a long time.
We gave them extension.
Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is public hearing on a tree removal permit application submitted by David Owen and Diane Bruning for the property located at fifty four oh six Trent Street, and I believe our could, could our, um, town arborist, thank you.
Do you want to pull up David Williams?
It's, uh, two trees, uh, that's on the coal set. Uh, Canadian lock, Indian diameter. The tree on the left, it's half dead, not every bride, and the Norway maple is dead, one on the right. Uh, I have lots of eighteen inches and all the maple six.
Okay, thank you, did, did the, uh, the applicants, yeah, okay. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, that, that Norway maple looks very threatening.
Counsel member circa.
No questions.
Counselor Kumar. Counselor member Rovak.
No questions.
And I take it there's no, uh, okay, uh, council, you prepared to make a motion?
Do we do it all at once? With a multiple tree?
I move. I move, I move that we approve the tree removal permit application submitted by David Owen and Diane Bruning for the property located at fifty four oh six Trent Street.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. The next item is public hearing on a tree removal permit application submitted by Nora Senate for the property located at forty seven oh nine Dorset.
Uh, this, this, uh, there's, there's, there's anything about landscaping at this house and some of the hardscape. They want to remove this American Hallings fourteen inch diameter, and you can see the picture of landing out towards bigger lunch. And I recommend removing the tree.
Yes, okay, thank you, and I, and the, uh, yeah, it's not here. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Counsel member circa.
No questions.
Counselor Kumar.
No questions.
Counsel Rovak.
No questions.
And I take it, nobody else is here, right? Counsel, uh, uh, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move that we approve the tree removal permit application submitted by Nora Senate for the property located at forty seven oh nine Dorset.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, all those opposed. Next item is public hearing on a tree removal permit application submitted by Tom and Cherie Lawler for the property located at fifty five twenty Trent Street.
This is an American Halling twenty three inch diameter and it's pretty much dead. And I recommend removing.
Thank you. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No questions, that house is gonna be crushed.
Counsel circa. Oh, Counsel member Kumar.
No questions.
Counsel member Rovak.
No questions.
We're still in quorum, right?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, are you prepared to make a motion?
Kabir, you do it this time, what the heck?
I motion to, uh, remove the American Halling at fifty five twenty Trent.
Is there a second?
No second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Fine.
Thank you. And you, you'll note, um, it's just three people here. Next item, public hearing on a tree removal permit application submitted by Kaz and Nesar Fatui for the property located at fifty six oh one Warwick Place.
This is a low old seventeen inch diameter, it's coming towards neighbor's house and their fall zone is concerned about the tree, it's on my.
Counsel President, I, I take it, Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Counsel member circa, we're on fifty six oh one Warwick Place.
Very much.
No questions.
Counselor Kumar.
This is the, uh, how the tree always.
Yes.
And, and you, you paint it with a real estate.
It's, yeah.
The, the picture you have, you can't see.
It's kinda hard to see, but it's, it's, it's less than part.
Yeah, Counselor member Rovak, do you have any questions?
No.
Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah.
A motion to remove the billow at five six zero one Warwick Place.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. Next item, public hearing in consideration of a resolution to discontinue the identification of residents with street names other than in permit notices and to establish a consent and release form for the use of photographs of minors identified by name and media by the town of Somerset, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, resolution was previously introduced at the last state of council meeting. It was first brought to, uh, to the council by, uh, Communications Committee who have sought to, uh, update how, uh, we, uh, name residents as well as use their photos, especially if it concerns minors in town media, uh, the biggest thing this resolution would do, as in the name, is, uh, for all residents unless if it's in the council agenda, you know, in the street names, and if it's a minor, uh, then they would need to have a consent and release form signed. And this resolution also creates that form.
Okay, thank you, and I believe our distinguished Communications Committee Chair. Madam Chair, did you wish to make a, any comments?
Um. No, it's just they're basically, it, it's pretty much as the town manager has just described. When any, our current practice is to identify the street name of a resident in the town journal in particular, um, and we'll discontinue that practice for children or, um, people under the age eighteen. If we publish their photo, we must, along with their name, their parent or guardian must give permission.
Thank you so much. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
Just, I'd like to tidy up the language a little bit, it doesn't change the, the, uh, content. Um, under the fifth whereas, which is the third one, on the third one after they know therefore be it resolved, it says at the moment whereas however the town recognized that it is nevertheless it is important to safeguard the privacy, which is awkward to say the least. Can you just change that to nevertheless?
So, so you could, so when you, if you make the motion for this, you can amend it, but this is you can't just change it like that. Hold on, hold on, just, just mention that's what you're gonna do.
You gotta do that, and also further on, I want to add a word, so just in that, okay.
Well, you might wanna say now, soon.
Yeah, okay, so just rewrite it as, um, nevertheless, town recognizes that it is important to safeguard the privacy and rights of individuals, which is a heck of a lot, even more understandable. Um, and then under, uh, let's see, the town. Yeah, so the next one, it'd be a result of town council that a consent and release for use of photographs and town media is hereby established. Just put procedure after release, so it's a consent and release procedure for use of photographs and town media is hereby established.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, so now what people can, if they have any questions. Counsel President, Counsel member circa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Counselor Kumar.
No questions.
Counselor Rovak.
No questions.
Did, I take it, just, yes, Counsel, uh, Ms. Counsel President Bard, why don't you make a motion?
Okay, I approve the motion to, uh, well, sorry. Prove, approve the resolution to discontinue identification of residents with street names other than in permit notices, and to establish a consent and release form for use of photographs of minors identified by name and media by the town of Somerset with the following amendments. Um, change the whereas, where it says, whereas however the town recognizes that it is nevertheless disimportant, to instead nevertheless, the town recognizes that it is important to safeguard the privacy and rights of individuals. And in the next one, just add the word procedure after release, so it's by the town council that a consent and release procedure, use of photographs and town media, media is hereby established.
Okay, you have a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. The next item is introduction of a resolution to establish a sustainable procurement policy followed by a public hearing and consideration of adoption. And I will turn it over to the town manager, and you will also explain why it's being introduced and he's requesting it be, it be voted on tonight, Mr. Town Manager.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so this resolution would establish this available procurement policy that would be used in conjunction with our standard procurement policy to ensure that Somerset's sustainability and environmental efforts extend to our procurement, uh, process. The reason that I have requested that this be approved tonight is because, uh, we apparently have been working in the staff to receive a sustainable Maryland designation. And this would, uh, greatly improve our application, uh, which closes by the end of the month, so that's why I request that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No, we discussed this during the work session, I fully support it.
Thank you. Counsel member circa.
No questions.
Thank you. Counselor Kumar.
No, thank you.
Counselor member Rovak.
No.
Counsel President Bard.
I can do it, I mean, do we need to do two motions, or do we just go straight?
I mean, I, I think we do, right? Don't they have to do two motions?
No, it could be one motion.
Okay.
Okay, well, in that case, I move approval of the resolution to establish a sustainable procurement policy for, that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. And the next item, this is my mistake, this isn't a public hearing. This is introduction, the technical corrections?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I don't know, I missed, uh, remember we were doing it? I'm sorry, everybody, I, I made a mistake, when, just so you all know, when there's introductions, there's no public hearing. It has to be voted on, so this item is really consideration of introduction of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to make technical corrections to the codex and to make alternate council liaisons optional for committees. And I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance would update two different sections of the town code. First, it would make the need for council liaison optional instead of mandatory. And second, it makes, uh, several revisions to the building code, uh, that clarify, uh, the existing code, not changing it.
Okay, Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Counselor member circa.
No question.
Counselor Kumar.
Will we discuss this during the work?
Counselor Rovak.
No.
Counsel, are you prepared to introduce this?
Ordinance. Yes, uh, propose introducing the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to make technical corrections to the codex and to make alternate council liaisons optional for committees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, it's been introduced, and now, um, so remember when we introduce, we, um, assign someone to, you're right, you're gonna write that, okay. The next one is consideration of introduction of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to every parking on Surrey Street between the driveways at fifty five twenty five and fifty five twenty seven, Mr. Town Manager.
As the name of government implies, this would make the thing between the driveways at fifty five twenty five, Surrey Street, uh, twenty seven, Surrey Street in the local parking zone in the town of Somerset.
Thank you. Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No, again, we discussed this in the work session.
And remember, everybody, this was at the request of the, of the resident. Counsel member circa, do you have any questions?
No question.
Counselor Kumar.
No.
Counselor Rovak.
Does anyone, like, will anyone, like, please sit, I mean?
Well, just like everything else, but, yeah, or strictly, of course.
There'll be a sign.
Well, you, you can discuss that when it's.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
But yeah, this is just the introduction, anyway.
Okay.
Uh, is there a motion to introduce?
Go ahead, Kabir, you're first.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Introduce ordinance, amend the court ordinance, I motion to introduce an ordinance to amend the court ordinance to prohibit parking on Surrey Street between, uh, driveways at five five two five and.
Is there a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? And our last item is consideration of introduction of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to exempt the town pool and grounds from application of the county noise ordinance, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as the, uh, naming suggests, this ordinance would make this a set pool exempting the noise control ordinance in the Montgomery County Code of Ordinance.
Counsel President Bard, do you have any questions?
No, again, we discussed this one at length, actually, in the work session.
Counselor member circa.
No question.
Counselor Kumar. Same, Counselor Rovak.
No questions.
Are you very?
Yes, I motion to introduce ordinance to amend the court ordinance to exempt the town pool and grounds from application of the Montgomery County Noise Ordinance.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.